America, to be equal for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for being here. Uh, roll call. Uh, we are short two this evening, seven of our nine. Uh, it is an excuse to absence for member absent. Uh, who is away on business and uh, also an excuse absent for member Benneker. And for those of you inclined, uh, to keep the Benneker family in your prayers, um, I encourage you to do so. Uh, we were properly noticed. Thank you so much, Kate. And with that, we're going to launch right away into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, uh, we have one of our outstanding business education teachers, Janet Denae is here with some students from uh, NHS, our natural honor society. And they've got a presentation about the efforts that they've done for some fundraising for some hurricane victims in Nashville. So I'll turn it over to our students as soon as they're ready to go. Come on up here and the slideshow should be ready for you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. For those of you who don't, who may not have heard of us, we are here uh, on behalf of the NHS for Nashville. We are a nonprofit that formed right after Hurricane Holly hit Nashville, North Carolina. Um, and we are working to fundraise for those affected in the school district systems down in Nashville.
Our core team consists of seven National Honor Society students, Kayden, Will, Kayla, Serena, Megan, and Gwen, and our, and Callie, our community member involved, Ms. Lynn Sataw, and our NHS advisor, Mrs. Denner.
So we really decided to help those Nashville because they were hit really hard by the hurricanes. They were very underprepared. They kind of focused more on tourism. They weren't really expecting bad weather conditions in general. Cause like where they are kind of north, kind of west, not good hurricane territory. And also with the wind boundaries, kind of like in the middle of two air masses. So they don't really get many storms. So they were really underprepared. They didn't know what was coming and they got hit really hard. Um, lots of destruction as you can see there. So we're trying to kind of help give relief to them.
Uh, to stay organized, we maintain a very specific structure during our meetings and throughout the week. We have weekly meetings every Thursday collaborating, collaborating to create ideas and check in on past problems. We organize our work with spreadsheets such as the Gantt chart shown below. Um, and we use that to help us stay on task. We also are in contact day to day to help each other and complete tasks outside of our meetings.
As a group, we have done a lot of events to get to where we are. One was when we did our learning about Ashville and how we could help. It was in the beginning of October. And then a very successful event was our miracle minute, which we raised under $2,000. And then another event was our Broadway performance of Cinderella, and that was really successful as well. Some other events that we've had was the Brock Fry at Piggly Wiggly. We like to partner with some local businesses. And we created T-shirts and we were interviewed by Fox Six News in December, and these are our shirts. Um, in January, we are planning for a basketball game and we're fundraising to sell these T-shirts to raise money. And soon we will play, help with Bright Star Another Play and help raise money for that as well.
So it's been about three months since we first gathered to kind of like brainstorm, kind of learn about the hurricane itself. We've raised $12,000 thus far, kind of through our events, gathering sponsors, et cetera. Just kind of, um, you know, gathering monetary donations, focusing on that rather than physical, because they're getting too much stuff that they don't know what to do with. And then we've been trying to kind of create a school, helping school kind of like atmosphere, I guess. So we've been partnering with the Buncombe School District and our community member Lynn is actually down there right now. Kind of working with the school district, kind of learning what they need and how we can help them more. And then we've kind of realized that everyone in Heartland wants to help. So we've kind of been trying to create more events that kind of bring everyone together rather than just us and Buncombe.
Uh, for the future, we set a very ambitious goal when starting of raising $50,000 for those affected. Uh, we're currently sitting at just around $12,000 like Kayden was just saying. So obviously we still have a long haul to go through. Our goal is to, even if we are not around that $50,000 let our goal we set for ourselves, we're hoping to carry our project on just past our spring break. As a good stopping point to get into the rest of our school years and for our seniors in our group to start getting ready for their college plans.
Um, so it kind of created a Heartland community connection. We're trying to get more outreach. So we have been trying to create more ways to get involved. One of them is a donation link on our Instagram to try and reach more of a statewide, possibly nationwide kind of reach. Um, and then we've been um, trying to create more fundraising opportunities. So we actually did make these T-shirts and we have them with us here today to sell, just all profits going towards Asheville. Um, and then we always have the weekly meetings, but sometimes we kind of just hit a roadblock, you know? The ideas aren't coming. So we're always looking for my, more ideas. Do you want to contact us at any time?
Uh, with that being said, that is all we've prepared. We're open to hearing any questions if anybody has any. So thank you for your time. Otherwise.
I just want to share a little bit too, just because they undersell themselves quite a bit. These are all leaders that stepped forward. Um, with the one email that got sent to me, I forwarded it to Kayden originally and another one of the leaders on the team that are the vice presidents of NHS and said, hey, anyone interested in this? I also think that the president and Kayden and the other vice president Gwen, that's been very active, stepped right up. And then they stayed after an NHS meeting, informed this committee with other members authentically. Um, they meet, they're all in so many organizations at NHS. I've definitely learned they uh, spread themselves very thin. Uh, but they meet on their own oftentimes with Mr. Ralph's classroom and him observing them as well. They didn't necessarily give him a shout out, but he's been another teacher supporter as well. So just an incredible group that has stepped up to this and um, the, the community member that they worked with has done some work with corporations and she does corporate culture at Volvo was her last project. She is a consultant and she said that she has not seen uh, corporate America function as well as these kids. So I just wanted to say that. And we did bring plenty of T-shirts if any of you are interested, but I'm just interested in entertaining any questions.
How much are the T-shirts?
Uh, we're selling them right now for $15.
$15, okay. So it Well, I was gonna say, I'm like, yeah, speaking of, as I'm going through the uh, my project management hat kind of went on because we're always looking for project managers. So do you see yourself going into something like that, non-for-profit agencies at post-high school or uh, you know, kind of expanding your education in that area?
Um, I do want to go into finance. So I think just handling these donations kind of on the spreadsheets and the accounting side of things. It's kind of helped me learn more about what I'm interested in. So I've just been kind of building my interest in finance through this and helping other people. So yeah, maybe like in the future, like kind of connecting those two things, finance and helping others like this. I think I can see that.
That's great.
I'd love to share too. I wrote a letter of recommendation for this exact thing today for a different member. So Serena Ball is on our group and she um, was applying for the uh, Bank of America, which allows her an internship where she'll run a nonprofit in Milwaukee this summer. Um, and then she also gets to go to a leadership camp, I think in the headquarters of that. So um, and yeah, so she, I mean, she hasn't found out if she made it yet, but I, yeah, I think she's definitely interested and she's been a really great leader on the team. So.
Okay. What about you guys?
Personally, I have a deep connection. I grew up, my dad's a firefighter, so I grew up with a deep connection to helping people. I personally love this aspect of stuff, but my interests are more in the political sense or the law sense. So right now I'm just kind of trying to broaden my horizons, I guess, in that sense while still learning the key things of helping people and getting involved in the community in the correct way.
Right. Well, as you know, with the natural disasters comes the political aspect as well. So I'm sure you're seeing all of that happen and play out. So awesome. How about you?
Um, for me, I really love helping people and I thought um, doing this would really help strengthen my skills as working as a team because I really want to work as a team and I really like this teamwork environment. And when I'm older, I definitely want to do stuff like this to help people and definitely make a difference in people's lives.
How often did, um, there's so many amazing groups here. Like this is just like a spur of the moment, like something happened and you created this opportunity for the kids, which I give you a lot of credit for. I think that's amazing. And, and I, how, how often does something like that happen? It's the first time I've heard of anything like this.
All the time. I feel like they reach out a lot. I, I, what I was thinking and really entertaining and I've kind of told them that. I kind of feel like a crazy person sometimes because we are all pulled in different directions. But then at the same time, it's so cool to see it all happen. So this is the stuff that really uh, makes the day better when they are along to see this, even you know, we have a group chat that isn't on stop. But it is like sharing like, you know, when we get a donation and all the celebrations and like they said Lynn's there right now. So she's sending us pictures tomorrow. She's meeting and having lunch with the school district. So yeah, I don't know. I've never done something really like this that I can think of and but I've only been the NHS advisor. This is only my second year. So yeah, so thank you.
That's great. Yeah.
I think I had a comment uh, much, much more over a, a question and just wanted to uh, refresh uh, the minds of some of the board members who probably have had touches uh, with National Honor Society through their own kids. Um, these kinds of things come to mind, academics, character, leadership service. These are uh, the kind of key areas that these young people um, are, are um, in that upper percentile uh, to be able to be accepted into National Honor Society to begin with. And then to go, I think above and beyond uh, to really this type of activity uh, and dive in, you know, just headfirst. Um, just kudos to all of you who have been involved in this.
The one thing I also am not sure if the board is aware of is Arrowhead gets to decide what the defining qualities of an NHS member are, and ours are quite sturdy. Um, the leadership component, it requires them to have led their peers of their own age or adults. So to obtain that into, um, our standards for NHS, I actually um, was talking to some NHS students from Hartford this weekend and they were telling me what theirs are and ours are definitely held to a much higher standard and throughout the whole time, we're not just like, you're in and you're in. They're still kept to that standard while they're in.
That's exactly what I was just thinking and, and to your point that to be able to um, to reach and maintain those academic standards while at the same time reaching out to an, another community with whom you prob- probably have no connection. Maybe you do, I don't know, but, but likely have no connection. But to help them out in something that's so horrible, it is so amazing. That's awesome. We're so proud of you. Absolutely.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your time today. Once again, I do have our contacts listed here, the seven of us. Our emails are listed there if any of you would like to get in contact with us. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
And who do we have to pay for T-shirts?
Um, for that, we can either take cash or check. Otherwise a donation to our um, donation link on our Instagram page.
There you go.
Oh gosh.
Right there.
What size are you?
Any of you want to get one in the T-shirt, we can also assist with that if you want.
Oh, thanks Kate.
Yeah, Kate, she can organize, but we'd be happy to take it.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for taking my money.
Thanks for letting us come in and
No, great for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You guys are great.
Yeah, good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
We'll take two here.
Two for the ladies on this side.
How do they run?
Uh, we have small through extra large.
I'll take a medium.
I'll take a medium just to be safe.
Are they 100% cotton? Sprink a little bit in the dryer. I know, I know. Oh my gosh, you kids just keep it up.
I think we need to have
I'm just, oh, let's do it. Next month would be perfect because the Bright Star production is I don't know. We're going to move on to uh, number three on our, our agenda facility and referendum report. Uh, the first order of business there is the EUA April 2025 referendum project management plan compensation. Uh, I don't know if someone from the administration wants to review that.
Sure. So um, when we, when we brought EUA on to help us with our facility study, the initial bid was $13,000. Uh, they started in September of '23. So in that 14-month period up to November 5th, um, the referendum vote, they put in $280,000 worth of work for that $13,000 compensation. They've come back and asked us, they've done some work since November 5th to get us to this point. So the last couple of months, they've got about $54,000 worth of their time and effort into the, uh, into this next planning phase. And they've requested uh, some compensation for that. They're looking for an additional $15,000. That wasn't part of the initial agreement. But the initial agreement actually ended on November 5th. So for that uh, span of time. So I'd recommend that we move forward with that payment. They've done well above and beyond what they're asking for. And uh, so that's, that's up for board action tonight. Actually, it's not board action. I'm sorry.
Most in just a general sense, I guess, from the board in terms of approval uh, for, for compensation here.
Do we find a sign?
We'll have a new contract if a building project were to, to go forward. Yeah. But we wouldn't do that until April 1st.
Will we be on the hook for any more funds?
No, this would get us through to April 1st. That's, they're looking for 15 to take them from November, take us from November 5th to April 1st. Assuming we go forward. If we don't, and they've still got $54,000 in so far.
Well, and clearly we've had a number of workshops and community meetings and uh, reports. Uh, all of our questions addressed on a timely way from uh, our, our teams uh, at EUA and VJS. Um, I would support uh, compensating them for what has been clearly a huge investment of their time beyond uh, November 5th. Uh, so I guess I, I'm looking for a sense from the rest of the board, whether you find agreement with that and we can um, proceed.
Was there ever a discussion once the referendum wasn't passed and their additional time and energy to get us to this point of any fees that were going to be associated with that work?
They, they actually brought this up. It was probably three or four weeks into the next phase. And some, we didn't, we just didn't have the meetings and, and the time to have a discussion about it. We, we missed a finance meeting that we wanted to bring it up and then get it on that agenda. Uh, so we thought, well, let's just bring it to the next opportunity and that's tonight. So uh, the request came in early on, you know, they weren't hired to go any further than getting us to that November referendum. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
I think it's just still a small portion of what they have put in. I'm, I'm absolutely fine with it myself.
I'm fine with it too.
I just have another question. Do we have just a special budget for this? Do we like budget for these costs or any kind of over? I mean, where is, like, where are we pulling from?
Yeah, we've got it through our facility budget is where we're taking these funds from so far.
Okay.
Number actually? I don't have a sound of it considering that the um, amount of time and effort that they have, have certainly put in, uh, especially the um, the push that they put in um, after November. Um, it, which was, I think incredibly impressive, but yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with it. Okay, it's up to you. Good approval though.
Thank you. Yeah, it's about, it's less than 10% of what they've actually got into it. So.
And there's still no guarantee.
Exactly. Yep.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next is discussion of action on the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 136.2 million. And I'm just going to kind of read something I think for, for framing uh, as we kind of enter into this area of, of board discussion. Uh, the school board continues to work to develop a long-term facilities plan for Arrowhead. As another work session was held in the form of a referendum workshop that was open to the public last Wednesday, January 8th. We had full board participation as we heard a final presentation from team members of VJS and EUA. Just to recap, the referendum brought before the community in November received 10,000 votes in support and 14,000 votes opposed and therefore did not pass. The board, in alignment with administration and our VJS, EUA team, listened to the community and responded by immediately pivoting to consider an alternative solution that continues to promote a plan that's in the best interest of our kids, address the community's desire for consolidation into, into a single campus, and then achieves these goals at a, at a much lower rate of taxation for the public. Again, the facilities and budget challenges faced by our school are not going to go away. The board is working diligently, thoughtfully and transparently to bring solutions to the public that will address these concerns. These solutions are presented to the community in the form of a referendum, which ultimately functions as both a proposal to our community and then a survey of our community in its response to the needs of Arrowhead. Again, the referendum workshop last week was the last in a succession of meetings held to bring a referendum forward for the April 1st ballot. As the board was delivered a detailed presentation last Wednesday, it would have been redundant to repeat the full scope of this proposal for this evening. For our members of the public, should the board approve a referendum this evening, I encourage you to watch the recording of the workshop of January 8th for full project details and please attend any upcoming information sessions at school. Additionally, as in the past, should this referendum be approved, there'll be a lot more communication moving forward uh, and a lot more opportunity to interact and I encourage the public to do so. So now I will read the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds as it provides an accurate summary of the proposed project. I'm not looking for a motion from the board at this time. Um, rather after the piece is read, I'll turn the floor over to the board members to offer comments and engage in any further discussion on the topic. So the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 137, I'm sorry, 136.2 million dollars reads as follows. Be it resolved by the school board of the Arrowhead Union High School District, Waukesha County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 136.2 million dollars for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building and facility improvement project consisting of consol- uh, construction of additions and renovations to the current north campus building to consolidate into one high school building, demolition of the current self-campus building, site and athletic facility improvements, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures and equipment. So given that, I'll open it up for uh, the comment and discussion.
Well, I'll just say, I've been doing some pulse checks within the community. Um, just try and get everything in my head squared away on the decisions that we're making. Um, and it's so split. And so I, to echo the sentiments from the workshop, I don't want to be redundant, but I support moving forward in this. And it's going to be up to our community to make the vote and it's going to be up to us to bridge the communication and understanding of why we cut it in half. And I'm on board to do that. So that is where I stand.
I'm on board also. I was a no at first and then um, as I mentioned at the workshop last week, after what happened in Madison with the shooting and uh, safety issues and that really got to me. I really um, thought about that quite a bit and also the fact that we haven't been able to have a survey to go forward with this. The question on the ballot will be the survey and we'll see what happens. And I can say I understand if people vote no, and I encourage those who want to vote no to come vote no, and I encourage those that want to vote yes to come vote yes. It's up to the community now. So I, I'm in support.
I um, echo Amy's sentiments. Um, coming back onto the board after being off, um, I really thought about surveying first, but using this time instead as using this as a survey really kind of sat with me after thinking about it. And instead of spending the money and we worry if it doesn't, if the survey won't give us the results that we're looking to do, we can use this as our survey. So.
Anyone else? Well, I, I echo the, the comments that have been made. Um, I too am um, in support of moving forward of this, uh, bringing it to the community. Um, again, I think we all risk uh, a level of redundancy as uh, some of this was said at the workshop last week. Um, nonetheless, um, from my perspective, um, I think there are two big things that um, that this addresses for me. And uh, the first is, you know, how do we um, how do we best uh, address the needs for our kids? I mean, it's all about the kids. And I think, you know, this does it. Um, you know, we, we need to provide uh, appropriate space. Uh, we need to optimize uh, the learning environments uh, and uh, and do the best we can uh, to uh, ensure that our kids have a space where the best learning can take place. Um, we've heard throughout this again, that uh, um, one of the outcomes we're looking forward to is the additional provision of uh, bringing this, the kids all under one roof um, and the potential for improvement to the school culture. I think in this time where the kids are, uh, you know, there's a, a definite concern for mental health issues. Uh, ways to address uh, that uh, you know, that area and, and enhance our school culture. I think that's a big deal. Um, also, uh, I think that um, if we invest in the school, I think it gives the kids, I think it gives the community a place to really be proud of. And, and look around, I'm not sure everyone's really proud of our facilities right now. So I think we need that. I think that's, that's really important. And I think of real paramount importance is this will address um, some, some significant safety and security, security concerns that we've had uh, with the, the bi-campus uh, uh, site plan that we have right now. Um, getting everyone under one roof uh, really ensures that when, when those doors close, um, the kids, staff, parents, visitors, anyone that's here.
There's a lot of additional safety. So, and I think secondarily, um, very broadly speaking, I think the refer- referendum also um, really addresses a lot of the both facility uh, and budget challenges that we've been dealing with. Uh, we all have been uh, shared the information that uh, at a ten-year point, uh, maintenance needs are somewhere in the two hundred fifty-three million dollars. At twenty-five years, it's a hundred forty-three million dollars. Uh, so at some point, we're throwing good money over bad, and this uh, opportunity to uh, to, to build and to renovate, uh, and to again consolidate and get all of the kids under one roof, I think really provides a way to address some of our, uh, our, our fiscal needs and our, our facility needs. So um, I'm a big, big proponent. Um, I'm excited to put it to the community. Um, and I'm excited, quite frankly, that uh, our administration has signaled uh, that based on uh, the many, many revisions and the amount of very thoughtful uh, time uh, that's been put into looking at the plan and design, they're excited uh, about uh, this, this approach, this renovation. So um, I, I hope that uh, it, it meets the needs uh, of our community in terms of tax tolerance. And um, I look forward to April for it, if in fact it's approved, so.
Yeah, I, I feel like we've listened to the community and have talked about renovating where we can renovate and building where we can build, and uh, it's a little combination of both and and uh, keeping uh, structure where we can. Um, I think the, the team has done a great job on, on trying to be as um, judicious as possible with the, you know, the funds from the community. So I think this is a, it's a good opportunity for the fund, uh, for the community to, to speak the modestly, if they agree.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think the only thing that I would add um, to that um, we have repeatedly heard um, that, that um, some folks don't see that security is an issue because there hasn't been a big problem here. We haven't had uh, a, a big security problem here. But my response to that is thank God we have not had a big, a security problem here. I, for one, don't want to wait for a big security problem here to go, oh, maybe we should address that. We have an opportunity here to be in front of something instead of after the fact, trying to fix something. I, I think we have had some close calls and some issues in the past that have been addressed. But I think we have been really blessed um, that things have not gone south. For the fact that we have kids in two buildings going back and forth all day. We have community members who can walk in with students to use the facilities or whatever because kids are coming into both buildings all day long. I, that's, that has bothered me forever, but that's how it has been done. Well, I think now we have an opportunity to change that. Um, so there's that. Also, as you touched on, um, the uh, school finance, that's not going to change anytime soon. And we've had Mr. Gross here who has laid it out for us for years, saying this isn't going to change. And so we have to take the bolt by the horns and address school finance ourselves. How many times have board members, admin, gone to Madison? Who gone to Madison? I mean, folks have come here, but we've also had our folks go to Madison, and they say, go to your taxpayers and ask for money. Well, guess what? That's what we're doing now. So I think that's, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Okay. I can just, from an administrative standpoint, I would uh, say we really appreciate the board considering this. And from the standpoint of survey data, we actually do have survey data from not that long ago. It seems like many years ago now, but just last spring, you'll remember, we did survey the community and they gave us great feedback as far as all three options came in about forty-three, forty-four percent approved by the community. The referendum in November kind of confirmed that number. And so I think knowing that the cheapest option on that survey was around one hundred seventy-two, one hundred seventy-three million, you know, we've done a great job going way below that number even, recognizing that if there's any chance for the community to support this, we had to get as low as a number as we possibly could. And so to everyone's credit, that's really using the survey information that the community gave us last spring in addition to the feedback we got in November. So can't really be any more responsive than what we're doing to the community right now.
That's a really good point. And that's, that's, I mean, I know we had kind of talked lately on the surface about um, doing another survey, but and I, right off the bat, did not like that idea. First of all, because of the timing. Second of all, because of the expense, but thirdly, because we did have all that information already. So it did just seem redundant. And I think just using that information, it, it, it it does um, kind of fall in us to, it almost begs the question, we have to ask the question. If not that, then what about this? If it's no, we have the answer.
Absolutely. Yes, if I remember correctly, one of the highest numbers on that survey, and certainly it was kind of uh, repeated again with the info sessions that were held. Um, it, it signaled some of the, the highest support uh, for consolidation. Uh, and so we, we started with the only one option uh, uh, for consolidation. This is just another option for consolidation. And as Conrad said, it's coming in at a price point that is even significantly less than what had been originally presented to us. So um, I think we're getting a, a really good bang for a buck with uh, with the, the one thirty-six point two. That is my opinion. So I think what we'll do from here is we will, um, we will take a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did public comments at all, or there's no chance for public comment?
It's the next thing on the agenda. It is the next thing on the agenda. Um.
Do you take, take the vote before public comment and then the order you're gonna go?
Kate, can you advise on changing the order at this point?
I think that the board would have to take a vote to change the order if we agenda, but if you want us to do that.
No, we can certainly do that.
I'll make that motion. A second.
All in favor of uh, doing public comment prior to taking the vote? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, Kate. And why don't we proceed to public comment?
Uh, my name's Keith. I think I've been here before. As you probably recognize my face, so you probably don't want me here, but um, as your survey.
On the contrary, we do. No, please don't say that. We do.
As uh, Mr. Farner keeps referring to a survey, forty-three percent, that's the maximum you're going to get for all three options. That's the maximum you're gonna get on this option. I'm one of fourteen thousand people that voted against this. I'll be one of fourteen thousand people that term this one down. And the, I listen to the workshops and I, I, there's so many questions when I listen to the workshops and I should probably reach out to the board members. I haven't helped myself for that, but number one, uh, this is an one hundred and thirty-six million dollar referendum, referendum, it's a two hundred and two million dollar referendum with, with interest for providing that the district can get four and a quarter percent. I don't know why the state doesn't change the statute to actually have a truth in taxpayers on these referendums to show the taxpayers the actual amount they're actually paying on these referendums, because uh, the taxpayers don't get a clear picture of what they're actually voting for when they're voting for a hundred and thirty-six million dollar referendum, which is not bad at all. Um, I listened to the workshop. Um, I thought I heard, and I'm not sure, Mr. Gross said that the, the school district will be losing nine hundred thousand dollars of state funding every two years. Um, I don't know if you can verify that, Jeff? I thought that's what you said?
Yeah, that's an estimate. And it's a, it's a very, very conservative estimate, meaning it'll probably be much.
So how many teachers are, is this board willing to let go four teachers, four hundred thousand dollars a year? Um, when they pass this referendum, where does that money come from? No one asked the question. I didn't hear one question, kind of glazed over like it didn't exist. Where does that money come from?
The state aid wouldn't be a reduction in the overall operational budget. State aid is just a portion of the revenue limit. So the revenue limit is what uh, is the funding that we have for operations, and it's made up of state aid and property tax. So if there's a loss in aid, it's a loss, it's an increase to the property tax, and that's all factored into the tax rate.
Okay, so the taxpayers will have to put the bill for an extra four hundred thousand dollars a year, you're saying roughly?
Correct, based on that analysis, yes.
It's not only a two hundred and two million dollar referendum.
That's all factored into that.
Let's add another twenty million dollars to that, too.
No, that's in that.
It's an other thirty-six million dollars?
No, no, no. It's in the two hundred.
In the mill rate of one dollar?
It's in the mill rate, the dollar too. It's in that.
So, so that's not disclosed to the taxpayers either on the referendum question. So another, another knock on, on all these referendums are, are happening. Um, I, I don't know. It, this board just continues. So uh, when I was in here for the two hundred and seventy million dollar referendum, I, I posed the question, so is this just a stepping stone to a lower referendum? And I think, uh, Kim, you said, no, that would not be the board's intent. Well, here we are again. That's the board's intent. So are we gonna, when we turn this down, and it will be turned down in April. So are we going through for a, what, eighty million dollar referendum at that time, or are we going for a hundred million dollars? I, I don't understand why this board just can't address the problem with the school and get the things fixed that need to get fixed, and go to the taxpayers honestly, and, and say, we need sixty million to improve this school. And you mentioned twenty-five years, we're just kicking the can down the road. Twenty-five years, this new building will need, I mean, this school district should be putting money away every, every year in their budget to account for replacement reserve. New schools are gonna need, or new additions are gonna need new furnaces, new air conditioners, new roofs, and the school doesn't budget for that. And I don't understand, pretend to understand how schools are financed. I know it's complicated, but and, and I, I don't mean that, you, you people have a, a very important job here, but right now, you're not listening to the taxpayers at all. Fifty-seven percent are gonna turn this deal down. And we're gonna learn that in four months from now. And I just hope, and maybe you can't bring it back again in November, maybe you have to wait a year. I hope that's the case. Um, but I just think this board needs to listen to their own survey and the taxpayer that turned down the first referendum. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please.
Would you mind setting up a time to go through some school finance with me? Just, I'll, give me an hour.
I would be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
During school hours or after school?
Whenever it works for you, I'll make it work.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is Jane Owen.
Good evening and happy new year, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, I recognize our fellow Arrowhead ES folks here in their viewpoint, so welcome here, all sides. Um, my topics tonight. Punching the numbers, correlating correct percentages from the two hundred and sixty-one million. Um, interest would have been seventy-one point four four at the, as I noted yesterday, one hundred thirty-seven million ash, so I apologize that I'm off by that one thirty-six two now. Interest would be thirty-seven point two seven to seven, seventy-five point five nine million. Bond deficits on the two sixty-one, old amount was sixty-five million. New would be thirty-four point one two million. Maintenance was eighty-six million in current dollars, one hundred forty-three you cited is inflation adjusted time amount for the twenty-five years. So I wish you would have been transparent and forthright on that. However, I will be right now. Um, new maintenance amount would be forty-five point one four million to seventy-five point four six million, with a caveat I'll add in a minute. Loss of state aid on the old two hundred and sixty-one million was twenty-one-ish. I had that face-to-face with Mr. Gross. New amount on the one thirty-seven would be about eleven point oh two for a total impact to the cost payers of three hundred and thirty-three million, not including any repairs or um, some other work that would need to be done. Uh, note to the public, we are almost debt-free at Arrowhead. We have two payments left. One is March fifteenth, the final payment on the nineteen ninety-nine bond for one million dollars even. That happens to be the eyes of March, if you like Shakespeare and all of that. And the Quad Center for a hundred and seventeen thousand and ninety dollars. Note that Quad Center is at South Campus. We have not heard yet from EUA or VJS. What happens to the Quad Center? And what happens to the new design and manufacturing center at South that just got finished less than ten years ago? Would that all get moved and recreated? Or are we just gonna demo what we paid for? I looked at the blueprints this week in moving it to North. For the public to know, in attending the workshops, the current projected uh, north building is only four hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet. We currently have total campus space of four hundred eighty-three thousand, so we're looking at a smaller building and fewer classrooms. Most of the public won't know that yet. Um, I would suggest keeping the two campus model and make each of them a nine through twelve campus. If you've got duplicate facilities, instead of moving the kids around, the students, excuse me, because some of them are the age of eighteen, for up to twenty-one, depending on certain cases, move the teachers. It's much easier than moving fifty to a hundred kids around for each period. Um, a note on the pool work, I looked on the website and printed out, and this is why the numbers aren't clear. Page seven, this was the pool report in twenty twenty-two, um, under the referendum, then facilities and reports, shows a, looking at a work amount of two point four two nine million to two point six seven nine million. This is from Fendor, when you find it on the website. But on page twenty, you go back February fourth of twenty twenty-two, so exactly two years ago, it shows uh, for an existing six-lane, two hundred fifty-two seat, four point eight five three million plus change, a new build of eight-lane, six-foot seat. They run twenty-three point seven six million. So no wonder your numbers are all over the place, when you're going anywhere from two point four million to four point eight million, to nine point nine million, to twenty-three million. So as a thirty-year competitive swimmer, and I'd love to sit in the water with you one day, Miss Angeli.
Jane, I'm going to remind you, uh, please, that there is a three-minute time limit. If you could wrap things up, I would appreciate it.
Um, this, Arrowhead is looking at what other events can they do with the pool? Even if it's an eight-lane pool, I contacted WIA, you have to have the other facilities with it. In other words, some enough seating for these events. If you consider that, I would highly suggest not just a twenty-five-yard pool, that's what we asked that question, but a twenty-five-meter pool. Twice Nationals has been held in meters only. If we restrict ourselves to a twenty-five-yard pool, we are out of these big events we want to bring in for cash flow. Um, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can just say that the numbers won't add up to anywhere near three hundred thousand. Um, our debt payment, we have one debt payment left. It's in March uh, on that uh, Quad Center, that DEMC, the Design Engineering Manufacturing Center at South Campus. And we talked about what items we would try to sell this year and use on any new build or addition or renovation.
Just to confirm, Jeff, can I ask you a question? Um, so with the, uh, the bond deficits, with the loss in state aid, the mill rate that you projected won't change, correct, for the, for the term of this?
That's all calculated into the dollar-two mill rate that we're projecting. And that's actually worst case, that's, that's the first year, and the rate will come down every year after that, but a dollar-two is what the impact to the taxes would be.
You actually make up the state aid the year after.
Right. So you can only lose fifteen percent in any one year, and the following year, you're likely to go up in aid if you manage the expenses appropriately. You'll probably jump back up like twenty or thirty percent in, in year two, then you'll lose your fifteen percent, and you'll jump back up twenty or thirty percent. It's generally how it works if you manage the formula uh, in such a way. And that's all managing. That's not to help our operational budget. I wish it could help our operational budget by managing that, but we're managing it to save taxes. By managing that, you can reduce the impact to property taxpayers, and that's what we do.
I think that's the biggest, um, from what I was listening to around the community. I think that's the biggest um from what I was listening to around the community, was the biggest thing of the financial, I don't understand it, why does it have to be this much? And I think we have a really great opportunity to perhaps create bite sized videos, post them on our website, to try and bridge the understanding as best as we can, knowing how incredibly complex the finances are with public schools, because it's like, you gotta read it about five, six times for it to actually start to sink in. So I can understand the financial frustrations that a lot of people have, and I'm on board with helping create those assets, if you will, to help the community understand it a little bit better. Um if it can help in any way. Because I feel like these numbers get thrown out, and then people are like, wait, what is going on? I, I'm lost again when I just started to understand it all, and I'm just being real with myself, like, where did that come from and how? And so if we can just get it black and white, like, this is what it looks like. These are gonna be the fluctuations between them. I think it would help a lot.
And that, there may be some people that are interested in going to that level of detail, but that's not very many. The bottom line, black and white number is the tax levy. Being talked about, told to everybody, that includes all the costs. So the simplest thing for the vast majority of taxpayers is, how does it impact my taxes? We are one hundred percent on that number. Everything's included. So anything else that people want to bring up, at the end of the day, it all comes back to that tax impact, and that is black and white.
That tax impact is estimated at a dollar two in year one, dollar one in year two, dollar year three, ninety nine cents. It goes down a penny every year, based on analysis, illustration. And that's assuming one and a half percent property growth to, to account for new growth only, not uh, not um rise in value of your own home, but it would be new growth only. That's factored into that calculation.
Everything we do is conservative. So the number we're giving is probably the worst case number to Jeff's point. It will actually probably be less than that, but you never wanna say that and then have it not coming out that way.
I think another big challenge that I've heard, just for the last, for quite a while now, from, from different people in the public is, is, you know, well, why don't we put, put aside money for A, B, and C? And, and I think it's it's unfortunate. Um and I, and I again, excuse me, again, welcome anybody from the public to come to as many meetings as possible. Uh but it's unfortunate that so many people don't understand that, that there's, that's, that's not a possibility. Uh there's not, there's not a pool that we can just say, okay, let's take us, take aside two hundred thousand dollars a year and put it in a fund for the roof. That's not, that's not the way that the funding model works.
It's a choice every year. You know, we can cut programs, increase class sizes, and put money aside, you know? But at some point, you're gonna have forty, fifty kids in a classroom. Um you're gonna have less, you're gonna, you're gonna lose your, you know, choices on world languages and some of those elective courses. Um but that's a choice the community has to make.
The way, the ways schools are funded in Wisconsin, you cannot do big projects without, that is how it works. That's our, we certainly do put some money away, but it's very little. Yeah, there isn't much left over. And if you look at the state data, we are one of the least spending districts in the state on a pure, per people basis. So we're frugal. We are, we get the least amount of revenue from the state, or at the bottom of that, we're funding. Um we're high schools, so that's a more expensive operation than a K twelve. You know, everything that taxpayers need and want to know, we can share it and show them and prove to them. We're doing everything the best we possibly can. But the way it works in Wisconsin, to get a big project done, you have to go to a referendum because you can't borrow funds as a school board. The community has to approve a referendum. So that, this is how it works. And I get that people don't always understand it, but you can just keep encouraging them to come and talk to us, um encourage them to go to the website. Um and, and to make matters worse now, not only is it just for the big capital spends, almost ninety percent of the districts of the state have had to go to operational referendum also, because they've been cutting our funding since two thousand and eight. If not kept up with inflation, and that is why so many districts are forced to go to a referendum, and we were one of those, and we've been successful twice now. Um some districts have gone eleven, twelve times to get those operations because they can't operate otherwise because of the way state funds schools. We're not making that up. You don't have that many districts across state go to referendum unless that's how it, it works. Um so we're happy to educate anybody that wants to educate.
Well, I would also recommend coming to Buildings and Grounds Committee meetings, because the school board, you only get a small taste of what goes on in the committee. It's a abbreviated portion. But if you come to a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, you'll see what needs repairs, what's being set aside, what's planned for the next coming years, and what we're doing, setting aside money for those types of things. And it seems like every B and G committee meeting we come to, we hear something new that's gone bad, and it needs ten, twenty thousand dollars of repairs. So we are keeping up with things. It's just that you don't always hear the meat of everything here at a school board meeting and committee is where a lot of the real um education would happen. It's a very good thing. And we have combined uh finance and Buildings and Grounds now. I don't know if we're going to keep it that way or not, but, you know, it kind of makes sense for what the money and how that ties into the facilities. So I would just highly recommend if you can get up at six forty or come at six forty five and sit in a committee meeting, um do so.
So learn how fun it is.
Yeah, the curriculum is wild. Yeah, that too. We've, sometimes like, we're so focused.
For you.
On the referendum, that there are so many other things going on in this amazing school as well, like curriculum and policy and things like that. So yeah, come to the meetings.
Absolutely.
Get involved.
I thank the board for um taking public comment uh prior to the vote, and I appreciate hearing from our two uh participants. So we're gonna pop back then uh to the uh item B of Facility and Referendum Report. Um I have the impression, uh just to weigh in, that uh in general discussion uh uh i- is closed. Uh no further discussion on uh on item B. Is there anything else that anyone wanted to add there prior to moving on to the vote?
You need a motion in a second.
Um if, if not, again, here, here is the specific, uh the specific motion. It reads, uh initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty six million, two hundred thousand dollars. Be it resolved by the School Board of the Arrowhead Union High School District, Waukesha County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to chapter sixty seven of the, of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty six point two million dollars for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building, a facility improvement project consisting of construction of additions and renovations to the current north campus building to consolidate into one high school building, demolition of the current south campus building site and athletic facility improvements, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. So I'm looking for a motion at this point.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, Ben? If not, we'll go to a roll call vote. Uh please say aye or nay as your name is read. Uh Member Ferris.
Aye.
Member Angelie.
Aye.
Uh Member Blajay.
Aye.
Member Hammer.
Aye.
Member Wood.
Aye.
And uh I am an aye as well. Thank you.
One more. Hi.
What did I forget? Did I not say your name? I'm so sorry. Member Miller.
Aye.
Thank you so much. My apology. Oh, he made the motion. Well, that's like, who knows what happens in this brand. Okay, so um motion carries. Uh thank you to the board. From there, uh we'll move on to the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty six point two million dollars. So I will read this as well, again, looking for a, a motion. Be it resolved by the School Board of the Arrowhead Union High School District, Waukesha County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to chapter sixty seven of the Wisconsin statutes, the general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty six point two million dollars for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building, facility improvement project consisting of construction of additions and renovations to the current north campus building to consolidate into one high school building, demolition of the current south campus building site and athletic facility improvements, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. Again, I'm looking for a motion on someone.
A second.
Any further discussion? Again, I think we'll go with the um, the roll call vote, including Mr. Miller of his turn. Uh we'll start with Member Ferris.
Aye.
Member Angelie.
Aye.
Member Blajay.
Aye.
Member Hammer.
Aye.
Member Miller.
Aye.
Member Wood.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So we have a unanimous vote of seven out of seven members that are present. Knowing that um we would have two board members absent this evening, I did reach out to each of them in advance of the meeting and asked if they would mind uh providing me with a uh, some type of uh support statement, uh position of support uh or, or lack thereof. Uh and I did hear from both uh Member Bennicker and uh Member Adsit. So I'd like to read at least a portion of each of those statements at this time. Um Board Member Bennicker writes, I am writing to express my strong support for pursuing the one hundred and thirty six point two million dollar capital referendum this April to consolidate our school facilities from two buildings into one. After reviewing the financials, considering the im- impact on the learning environment and prioritizing student safety, I firmly believe this proposal is in the best interest of our district and our community. I'm excited the VJS is designed to create a modern facility that supports collaborative and innovative teaching methods that is critically important to set our students up for success for life after high school. Consolidation into one facility would enable us to implement enhanced security measures more efficiently. I appreciate the extra efforts that VJS and Arrowhead administration did to make safety a priority, to minimize the entry points of people entering our school. Consolidating into one building will lead to significant cost savings in the long term. By eliminating the need to maintain and operate two separate facilities, we can reduce overhead costs and allocate resources more effectively. These savings could be redirected to enhance educational programs and services for our students. Board Member Adsit wrote the following position statement supporting the referendum question on the ballot. As a board member, I strongly believe it is our responsibility to present the recently proposed plan on the north campus renovation to the community in the form of a referendum question. It is our duty to survey the greater Arrowhead community to determine if unifying our campuses under one roof is the direction they are willing to support. Our role as board members is to act in the best interest of both our schools and our community, and the only way to truly understand what that entails is by asking for their input. This plan is approximately half the cost of the November proposal. It has been carefully crafted to address the largest concerns identified through earlier surveys and community conversations, including improving school safety, enhancing learning environments, reducing inefficiencies, and focusing on addressing the essential needs of our facilities not once. It represents a pragmatic approach to tackling the most pressing issues facing our district while respecting the financial considerations of our community. Uh he goes on uh and kind of sums things up and says, regardless, regardless of the community's decision, the board and administration must still address these challenges. While we are committed to managing every dollar carefully, our annual operating budget and normal funding sources are not sufficient to properly address these significant needs. If the community decides not to support this proposal, we will be faced with making some very difficult decisions to tackle these issues in the most fiscally responsible way possible. These challenges will not disappear, and we remain dedicated to finding practical solutions that prioritize the best, best interests of our students, staff, and community. So of course, while Member uh Bennicker and Member Adsit have no formal vote uh this evening, uh I think it's important uh for everyone to um understand the complete unanimity uh that our board uh has decided upon for this evening. So I appreciate uh them uh leaving their position statements with me. Um I want to thank the board. Um this has been a long process. Oh, this is now uh kind of the culmination of a year and a half. Uh and uh I, I think uh we all knew there were a number of options before us. Um and uh I think there's been a very diligent, thoughtful, and transparent uh process in place. And I appreciate all the, the work uh that the board has done and the listening uh that was done in response to the results from the November uh um ballot decision. Um I also, on behalf of the, the board, uh really want to um express gratitude for both the administrative team uh and uh those teams uh that are represented by uh folks at VJS and EUA. Uh clearly, there's been an enormous amount of work, uh very, very thoughtful uh design that has been taking place in particular, uh in a very short time since November fifth. And so um we uh want to thank you for all of the, all the time and effort uh and thought uh that's gone into providing the option presented tonight. Okay. From there, we will move on to our consent agenda. Uh noting that the consent agenda this evening contains the December eleventh, twenty twenty four regular board meeting minutes, the bill payments report, donations, the personnel report, resignations, reassignment and remires. And uh I leave this open to the board right now. If there are any particular items in the consent agenda that you want to pull out and set aside for specific uh consideration, apart from donations at this point. If not, if Member Angelie wouldn't mind uh reading the donations report, I would appreciate it.
Of course. All right. Um so the first one being from December of twenty twenty four. Um the donation came from Victor Langer. Can only assume there's a connection.
Yep.
Um.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, it's his, his father. Oh, that's fantastic. Um so the donation goes to Special Need Scholarship Program in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. That's awesome. And um again, from December um twenty fourth of twenty twenty four, uh the donor is the American Online Giving Foundation to the robotics program in the amazing amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars.
Can someone share a little bit of background information on that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um so that's our second donation of that size to the robotics program this year. There was one in September, October, and then another second one. So one was an anniversary gift for a worker, and they were able to donate to whatever organization they wanted to. They chose our robotics program. And the same person must have access or, or was awarded another gift, opportunity.
Wow.
And provided to robotics again, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Member Angelie.
You are quite welcome. I love that.
Okay, so I'm looking.
Just want to pull one other thing out, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
So I, I just wanted to say that I'm uh saddened to hear of our losing of Jennifer Passler. Uh she uh in, in the time that she has interacted with this board, she has the energy of a new teacher. And uh so I would imagine she would be well missed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So into our first committee report, we will launch into curriculum with Chairwoman Comer.
Thank you, President Schubert. We had a meeting on December nineteenth of last year, six forty-five, and we had a pretty good attendance. Four people, four people present, one virtually. And I hope we have some good attendance tomorrow. Six forty-five, there's my plug. The first item that we reviewed was Nicole Moser presented a student trip to Austria, Germany, and Switzerland. So that's set for the twenty-sixth, based on the summer of twenty-two thousand twenty-six, based on an action of voting for that trip. There was a France trip we're supposed to review, but that had been canceled, and I don't think that's being brought up again.
It's not at this time.
Okay. So and then the members of the social studies department, you know, we always have departments come in and present, and they're always very informative, and I encourage anyone, if you can attend one, to please do so. So the social studies department, I think they had five or six people there from that department. And it was a very long involved presentation. It took the entire time until eight o'clock when we have to break up due to me having to go to work. But anyhow, they reviewed the five main disciplines of their department. So the social studies department, history, civics, behavioral science, geography, and economics. They reviewed the graduation requirements, how many social studies credits, student grade data, highlighted seventeen courses available in the department. It was just a lot of information. And I learned a lot from when they were there, and I'm sure that everyone else who attended was. They also reviewed AP classes and data from the Wisconsin Forward Exam, Wisconsin Social Studies academic standards. Just a lot of information was presented, and the various social studies student clubs were also mentioned. So we'd had an exchange of questions, and they answered all our questions. And like I said, it was very informative. But it took the entire time, so that's all we were able to go over. We also had on the agenda a review of social studies textbooks. And I don't know how exactly how many people have checked a textbook out, but I have. I know Lindsay has, Kim has, and Anne. I don't know if anybody else has. But from the various classes, and since this was a while ago, we've had a chance to review the textbooks, and we will be discussing those with members of the social studies department tomorrow. So that should be also very interesting, and hopefully we'll have that, and we'll get to the director's report if we have time. Those are really just the two items on the agenda. Do you have anything to add about the social studies department or?
No, I thought they did a really good job giving an overview of the value of those types of courses that's required for graduation. You know, connected the fact that the board just approved another course in the social studies department and some name changes. I think hitting hard the fact that their content is important, but also that the skills, academic skills that they build in our students with writing and reading skills is highlighted as well. And I think that's an important note in terms of where their focus has been as of late. So.
Yeah, it was very, yeah, very informative, and I'm glad we do that type of thing with the different departments. So like I said, our next meeting is tomorrow at six forty-five, so hope to see you out there. Oh, and then we do need to vote. Okay, let's. Do you want to present that, President Schubert, or?
If you want to go into that, that would be just fine.
So we just need to a motion to approve the student trip to Germany.
So moved.
Motion carries. Oh, we have to vote.
After hearing the itinerary, I was ready to.
It's a fabulous looking trip.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Against? Motion carries.
Super, thank you. Thank you so much, and we're looking forward to the meeting tomorrow morning. Moving on to finance legislation, building and grounds, the title's getting longer and longer by the day with Chairman Miller.
Yeah, so most of this was dedicated to building and grounds. Jeff, I'll let you get into any details that you want, but high level, Mr. King went through a whole lot of few issues and a whole lot of topics related to the building and grounds. But two poor issues again, which Jeff, can you have any update on whether or not?
We will on Monday. Bill's meeting with him tomorrow, tomorrow Thursday. Newman's coming out tomorrow to take a look and give us an idea what it might cost.
He also presented some options for limiting the staffing budget for the maintenance department in terms of just scheduling changes, which is
Yeah.
great idea. Brian distribution program, which will eliminate some of our salt costs, which is nice, along with the month that we track into that schools for cleaning purposes. And then we also talked about some cost-saving options for the maintenance facility, which are pretty exciting, considering some of the quotes we received were incredibly high. And then we also talked about referendum planning, just what we need to do to get where we are tonight. Here we are. Anything else to add, Jeff, in terms of details that?
No, covered it.
Next meeting is scheduled for Monday. Super. Thank you so much. Personnel Committee, Chairwoman Angely, anything to report there?
I have nothing at this time.
Policy Committee report.
Nothing at this time, although we will be talking about some action items at the end of the meeting today that we would have discussed in a recent policy meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Ferris. Okay, moving on then to other reports. We'll kind of kick in, given that Member Benneker isn't here to share a scintillating CESA report. We will, we'll dig into the WASB twenty-four, twenty-five resolutions discussion. Those had been previously posted, thank you Superintendent Farner, in in a board update some time ago, as well as, of course, posted to the agenda here, and I hope everyone's had an opportunity to look through these resolutions. And as a reminder, this is all kind of part of an ongoing process. Part of the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee. The process begins in September. The September deadline for submission of resolutions is usually mid-month, after which policy and resolution committee members meet and start the process of kind of weeding out and changing language and bringing things forward. Then there's this a second meeting in November, and it culminates in the Assembly, the General Assembly, that's part of next week's state convention. So the resolutions that you've seen before you are both resolutions that had been approved by the Policy and Resolutions Committee for bringing forward to the General Assembly as well as resolutions that had been shot down through committee. But understand that at the General Assembly, the opportunity does exist for any originator of a resolution. In fact, I think anyone can kind of reignite the resolution and bring it forward again. The difference being that the the voting, there's a higher standard. It increases to two-thirds of the vote of the Assembly to make that pass. So I don't know the best way forward on this, whether it is to go resolution by resolution or to just open this up to particular resolutions that that our board members have concerns about. The purpose of the discussion is to inform me as your delegate, your voting delegate for our board. It's to inform me the direction that I should be placing the vote next Wednesday morning. So you can see there are a number of resolutions that made their way through committee. I'm not sure if all of them meet with the approval of our individual members on our board. And I guess that's kind of the purpose of the discussion right now.
What happened when these resolutions get approved by the General Assembly?
They go into a big, big binder. A big WASB binder. And basically, what it does is it determines both their legislative yeah, focus, their educational focus. And, you know, I guess it adds to to policy development if that's the direction it goes. Some of the resolutions end up being submitted, and it's it really becomes a language issue where there are just small changes at times made to existing you know, existing policy and they're little more than updates, and other of them are, other of these are, you know, brand new content that you know, may be deemed worthy of a General Assembly vote. So.
Yeah, I know that. Oh, go ahead. I was just going to ask him. Since you're closer to this and have been part of the process for a long period of time, is there anything that stands up to you that you think deserves discussion here or?
Yes. I do have, you know, I guess I do have some some thoughts on a few of these, and I would direct your attention and perhaps individuals can take a look at them and review relatively and give me your thoughts back. In particular, there are Resolution twenty-five dash zero six, early childhood education funding and public-private partnerships. The way that this is worded, you can read for yourself, but in essence, this was presented as causing WASB to further support the addition of three K, not just four K, for all of Wisconsin children. The rationale that had been provided is that in general, it's it's difficult at times for low-income parents to to find childcare for their child. And so they would like state funding directed at the adoption of three K programs where people want to do that. I'm not sure if that's the direction that the board members would like to see the lobby efforts of WASB go.
Yeah, I personally think that's an abysmal idea. I understand the the desire, the need for low-income parents to to be in a situation where they they need to have childcare, but I think that especially the early development years are so critical to be with parents or with a family caregiver, somebody that they know and love versus sending them off to the school. I would I would not personally be in support of this idea.
As an aside, it there it basically just supports WASB's actions directed at legislators or the state. It really does not in any way spell out what the public-private partnerships should look like. Nor does it address the potential costs involved. I took, personally, in my opinion, I took issue with this because I felt it to be very poorly defined. Kind of one of those be careful what you ask for kind of potential policies in the making.
Well, I would also want to understand what other programs or other organizations are out there that's also supporting that three K program versus WASB overseeing that entity as well.
Yeah, I guess that's why I asked the initial question about what happens after, because the actual implementation of something like this, knowing from experience in this industry, is going to be not easy.
The legislature has to do something. I compare it often to the DPI proposal that comes out every year. The guy always proposes this great budget, and it never, it's not real. Doesn't happen. They don't.
It sounds really good.
Right, so this, a lot of these resolutions are.
They are.
And reading between the lines, this is probably more so developed for rural communities where there isn't a lot of childcare options, and the home care, it's just there's just not enough home care to support whatever industry might be in those rural areas, probably like a manufacturing operation or farming. There's just, there is a big, big issue in rural Wisconsin, rural America right now for access to childcare. My guess is that's probably where this originated in some way, shape, or form.
And urban.
And urban, yeah. And I actually, I can probably share, there is I can, I can look back at who originated the resolution. A lot of these did come in from Milwaukee. Like, even Stoughton in Milwaukee, but I can double check on that very broadly.
So it also push back on full day.
Yeah, that's a little crazy.
Well, you know, I mean, we're really lucky here because we have a lot of schools that have the three K and four K program offerings. I mean, I know ULS has three K, four K offerings, and they actually have like help, financial aid help. So I mean, I can see it pertaining to other school districts, but for this school district, we have a really great system with that offers three, four K programming. In fact, they're like competing against each other to get the kiddos. So.
Yeah, and again, this is use of state values. Perhaps, you know, you can contemplate that, let me know, but kind of closely related to that is Resolution twenty-five oh seven, Staff Mental Health. Again, a proposal that would direct WASB to, you know, support legislation that would fund statewide mental health for district staff that you know, may need additional support. Again, my opinion here was that is that not what the purpose of individual school budgeting is for? And again, be careful what you ask for as you start asking for more out of the state budget. But you can read that for yourself as well. And again, to direct me on on what the board vote should look like, I would appreciate that. Another one that I can direct your attention to gave me pause, big pause, is Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, Funding for School Meal Debt.
That's the one I was looking at.
It reads, the WASB supports legislation that allocates money to reimburse districts for the cost of unpaid school meal debt if they are feeding all students without stigma. And while I think, you know, it certainly is a would be a nice thing to ensure that we have the state cover meal debt, and at times I think it would be a good thing to alleviate that from our budget as well. It begs the question that if kids aren't even necessarily inclined to to have meal debt, will they not be inclined to jump on? And and all of a sudden, who is paying for their school lunch at all anymore? Perhaps you're asking for a lot more. you're asking for a lot more meal debt than the school, rather, the state should be funding.
And then does that mean breakfasts?
Well, these are just school meals, whatever they might be.
Only if you don't pay your bill. Only if you don't pay her.
Yes.
Yeah, if you don't pay, they're going to give you the money.
This is just a recipe for a huge mass of allowances. Just ridiculous. Ridiculous.
There's no such thing, it's pretty much.
Well.
But again, the committee is going to pay for it. Committee did approve this and moved it forward.
Luckily, they're not making the decision.
So those are, in general, I think, some of the ones that I would have your attention pointed to.
Again, those are the things then too, where, you know, they want to put that up, but yet there are school districts who have to go to their community for referendums, and the community goes, what?
Maybe we can redirect that breakfast lunch, or that breakfast money into, you know, like replacing a roof.
I didn't know.
The one, the one that I would be in support of you supporting is the one that we brought forth to the Policy Committee that everyone unanimously at that meeting that was very well-intended agreed with, and that was the one that was shot down, New London Save Women's Sports.
Yeah, one hundred percent. Yes, that was, yeah, again, that was an interesting one. We kind of talked through that a little bit at Policy Committee meeting one morning. The New London Save Women's Sports, which was eliminated in the first round, despite a number of local people. And interestingly, it was brought up again in November, kind of re-presented with some language changes that I think made it even that much potentially more acceptable. But nonetheless, while we voted on it and we moved the needle, we were short one vote to bring it forward to the Assembly.
That would explain why I did not see that here.
That is correct. And so when, I think there are two different two different categories here. There's the submitted resolutions packet. So that submitted resolutions is the complete packet of resolutions that both were promoted and will go to General Assembly, and those that were turned down. My guess is that the only one we might anticipate hearing from again at the General Assembly would be the Sableman Sports Resolution. I think New London is once again planning to bring that forward. And frankly, in light of Congress's actions yesterday, there might be a different outcome at the Assembly.
That would be amazing.
So again, you know, if I, if I can go through these, and you can kind of just give me a general sense, so I know what to do. I don't mean to make this, this is going long already. I don't want it to be painful, but I'll go resolution by resolution, and you can kind of let me know how to cast the vote. So I'm going to start with Resolution twenty-five oh one, Blue Room Commission on School Funding. Is that an aye? All in favor of that, if you can?
Maybe we should look at it as, are there any of these that anybody would like to support?
I mean, we can go piece by piece, too.
I'm not sure if everyone has, you know, ample time to review everything.
Can also delegate the Florida G.
Yes, that's true, and if you.
Yep.
That sounds perfect.
I will, I will certainly try to act in the best interest of the board, knowing where the common sense decisions. Okay, and that's resolved. So we're going to make this more painful than it has. Put it away.
No, but I think it helps that you bring light to this before. This, I remember when it first came up in topic that this was even going on, and with the idea that we didn't even know that these resolutions were even being brought forward. So at least it's bringing attention to the board and to the public of what things are being asked for out of WASB.
Hundred percent. Yes, and I think from my perspective, I hope I'm sharing with you, and you can see for yourself, of the resolutions that are submitted, perhaps you can understand the the general feel of the audience that makes up the Policy and Resolutions Committee. You can appreciate how these are being voted on, and you can see the direction of the resolutions based on how that voting has taken place. Okay, I'm honored that you would interest me with that, and we'll move on. Thank you very much. New business, Discussion and Action on Regular Education Open Enrollment Space Availability.
This is an annual process that all school boards have to go through at their January School Board meeting. Each year, we use a little bit of a formula after analyzing what a projected enrollment looks like to establish the seats that we would like to offer. The primary group that benefits from this is our feeder, eighth-grade students in the feeder schools who want to come to ninth grade and come to Arrowhead, who've been going through their educational experience in one of the feeders. We get a few more students in that typically that apply also, but this year, you'll see we've only opened seats at the ninth-grade level, a total of ninety-one seats, and that will cover all of the incoming kids with a little bit more capacity. Our projected enrollment, you can see, is very low right now for that ninth-grade class, so that's the reason that the number is increasing. So the board just has to formally approve those seats for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
And then obviously, if they've open enrolled for that year, they will have the opportunity to open a roll for the subsequent years, ten, eleven, twelve.
They don't have to do it again, they're just in the program.
So I am looking for a motion at this point for approval of the open enrollment as it's provided to us.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second. I also want to thank the administration for answering my questions. It provided a lot of insight. I was like, where did this come from? So thank you so much. I did a thorough read of it and really, really appreciate it.
All in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries.
Thank you. And then the second part of that process every year is the special education motion, similar idea, you need to use some criteria to establish how many open enrollment seats you're going to allow for special education students. Anna Bolt has put together this background information, which looks very similar to previous years. Adam, if you want to add anything, please feel free.
Peter School students with IEP kid, and then we have one seat total, so that will be likely taken up by a Peter School student, and then will be closed off, right? So we have five students in our Peter Schools that are all been enrolled. They are granted open enrollment here, which also then consumes the one seat. So that's for special education that we branch out, speech and language, because it's two different employment categories, and there's five seats over for speech and language only. Speech and language only students are pretty rare, but we would have five additional.
So we would just ask for a motion to approve the one special education seat and the five speech and language seats for twenty-five, twenty-six.
You should call that the, you should call that the langer seat.
Right, right, exactly. Motion to approve langer seats.
Oh, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Okay, hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to convene and close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen twenty-three five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.